This time I'd like to call our regularly scheduled meeting of the Harlingen City Commission, which is duly posted to order. And the first item on the agenda is to ask Commissioner Mesmar to lead us in the indication.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. In the name of the Father, and Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Our flag is the United States of America, and this is the Republic of which we stand, one nation, united in this law with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everyone. Glad to have you here at our meeting tonight. And we'll go right to the first item on the agenda, which is Board Member Recognition. Is Charlie Pettis here?
Yes.
There he is.
Charlie.
Please, please come up again. We want to recognize Carlos Pettis.
Better not to try.
Better not to try. For agreeing to serve on two of our very important, of course, working the Parlor House authorities, which is extremely important, do so much important work in our community, and of course, advisory board.
So let's get a touch of clear tree?
No.
I'm just kidding.
Don't kid about that. Okay. You know, I'm gonna do one. Anyway, thank you for agreeing to serve on these boards, and we want to recognize you for your willingness to serve, and we know that you've done so many good things in the community over the years, and you're gonna make very important.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item two is the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of November 4th. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I'm moving approval. Second.
All those that favor say aye.
Aye.
The minutes are approved. Item three is the Community Wide Trash Off Day held November 14th, 2015.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Juan Diaw with the Code Enforcement Department. As you know, we had on November 14th of 2015, on Saturday, we had our Community Wide Trash Off. We picked up 10.02 tons of debris that was brought in from the citizens to clean up the park. As you can tell here, our volunteers MMA, and we had the four H.
Kids right here?
Yes, sir.
They were there helping out, picking up trash all over the park. They were very helpful. They would like to be able to take a picture with you if possible, they said. I did bring the certificates, and we left at the office, but I will be giving them to them, okay? We picked up 159 tires also. That was collected. And we also fed them, we gave them hamburgers and hot dogs for their yearly assistance with us. They help us all year round, so we thought of treating them with a hamburger and hot dog. And like I said, we would like to thank the volunteers, which is the MMA kids, also Judge Daryl Hester, the General Center, and the four H Club kiddos, and especially also Mr. Delua and his family. They're always very helpful. They always help us out a lot on the cleanups. And we are gonna have another cleanup on December 12th, this is coming next Saturday. We're gonna be at West Fillmore, West Curtis, and West Rice, starting from F Street all the way to J Street. So we'll be there during the neighborhood cleanup. If you have any questions, I'll be more than glad to answer.
Okay, well, listen, that looked like a great, a great effort on that. These are always fantastic efforts for our community. It's really important. They really do so much to help keep our city clean, which is important to us. So we wanna go ahead and recognize the folks that helped out.
Like I said, these are four H school kiddos that are very helpful. They helped us out a lot. This is near possible, guys.
Now, now, look, the stack, the stack of these things that I signed this afternoon were like this.
Yeah.
So, but you didn't.
No, sir, I'm sorry. I didn't think they were gonna show up, and that's why I just.
Look at the camera. We wanna, we wanna recognize you guys and thank you for helping out with this. Okay, well, hey, thank you very much, and I know we've got some other committees that we do wanna hand out. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Ray Delua.
Mr. Delua.
I'm Sammy Melendez, and Catherine Delua. So we wanna, we wanna, Ray's got the biggest collection of anyone. And we really, and we really appreciate our repeat defenders going out there and keeping our, our city beautiful. So thank you so much. All right, thank you. Was there anybody else that participated because it was a big?
Yeah, that, I was just expecting the Delua family. They called me off card when they showed up.
Okay, great. All right, thanks.
Thank you all.
Item, okay, item 4A, we wanna take out from the consent agenda. Item 4A is the second and final reading to approve and adopt an ordinance on specific use permit to allow a bar lounge in the light industry at Lyon District located at 422 North L Street bearing illegal description of lots in 8 through 10 block 2. Castle Meyer addition to applicant David Martinez. Commissioner Valarosa wanted to discuss this a little bit further.
Mayor, and my fellow commissioners, I received a phone call from a constituent that lives across the street from this place, that they applied for this SUP permit. They, they were, they really didn't understand some, what exactly was going on, so they called me and I talked to them. I told them exactly what was gonna happen, that we might give them a permit so they could open a bar and lounge. I told them about the conditions that they would be having, and the one thing that were not in favor was the music. They said when Papa Joe's was there before, at times they played the music loud. They bared with it and they dealt with it, but they were not in favor of this establishment, if there's gonna be loud music for it to, to go through. There also, there is a, a terminally ill child that lives also across this establishment that they mentioned that, you know, having loud music would, would impair and affect your illness, also the hours of playing music loud, or should it be loud? And late into the night, it would, it would also, you know, affect her, and also a lot of them are working people. I asked for them if they could, if this individual could appear today before, so he would be able to present this to let you all know, but because of his job and his hours, he wouldn't be able to, to attend our meeting tonight. So I asked, I told him I wouldn't, would go ahead and mention it and bring it before the, the Commissioners' meeting, and I'm bringing this before you and letting you know that the people that are basically in front of this establishment are not in favor of the, of the getting the specific use permit for this establishment.
Okay, what was, did, I know that you sent out written notices to the neighbors. Do you wanna walk us through what happened? Were there any objections from any of the neighbors based upon a written notice?
We did not receive any written objections from the surrounding property owners. I believe we sent out 21 notices to the surrounding property owners, and we did get one phone call from one of the surrounding property owners who was in favor of the request, but we got no enforcing objections during the, during the request or during the public hearing for the planning zone commission.
Okay. What were the, was, was noise discussed? Noise abatement, is that discussed as?
There was some discussion at P&amp;Z about the noise, but strictly strike device, and it was similar use to what was there before, and I believe the previous establishment had noise outdoors, and this one was gonna be all indoors. And it was also brought to their attention that his future plans is actually to make it to a, more like a restaurant, a bar and grill, more of a restaurant use, but the initial use would be more for a bar once he obtains, I guess, the income to expand, he is proposing more like a barbecue restaurant for that stuff, for that property.
Okay.
Hey, one question, just, just to clarify on the issue on the noise, could I, could imagine, if I lived there, you know, across the street, that'd be a concern. Is, is there any consideration? I know some of these establishments sometimes doors open since they have that patio area. Is there any requirement for them to keep the doors closed during the live music?
Not specifically. I know in one case we had for, one bar grill had a live music indoors, and when they opened the doors, the music could be heard out there. It was, it recommended like a little industrial inside, outside to.
Like a buffer?
Buffer the, the noise, and that was one suggestion for similar use, but not for this one, because it's not for any concern with the dress, kind of means it's a, it was a public hearing, and we didn't give any objection at that time.
But when you have a live band like that, and they have a bass player, it doesn't matter whether the doors opened or closed, or whether the building is hermetically sealed, vibration from that bass, you know, goes a long, long way.
Right.
And I can see why they would object. I mean, that was the strange thing before was, is nobody objected, and so it was like, you know, they were either comfortable with the establishment that was there before and didn't have a problem with it.
You know, normally we would have a police report. I don't remember a police report when, when I looked at the P&amp;Z. Was there ever, did we, did we ever discuss if we had any problems there? Because normally that's only when it's a bar.
Right, since it was.
This is gonna be only a bar.
The previous one was a restaurant, and this one's a bar, so that's why you get a report from the previous one, because of different use for this.
Yeah, but, you know, a lot of these places where they have that mixed use like that, they usually close the kitchen at 11 o'clock, and then becomes a bar from 11 to 2. I don't know. I mean, you got a good point, and I'm looking at the map here, and it's kind of strange because you have what appears to be very industrial behind the bar, or the location, but around it, it's pretty heavily residential.
Well, it's a residential neighborhood with one single industrial form or use there.
Correct.
Well, what if we, what if we tabled this? Could we table it at the next meeting, and maybe get the property owner and talk to the business owner and see if there's not some sort of a, an accommodation that can be reached or a condition that could be put in the SUP that would satisfy the property owner and at least give, let's go ahead and give, take this as a, as an objection that maybe hadn't been considered previously, and just look, at least look into it.
Okay, we can bring it back. I'd like to make the motion that we table this item.
Second.
All those that favor say aye.
Aye.
Suppose like sign. Motion carries items tabled. So we'll go now to item, the consent agenda, items 4B, C, and D. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda, items 4B, C, and D?
Can I ask a question about C? Didn't we already do that? Or did we, that was a different year, the core logic?
It's a different one.
Okay.
Let's take the motion that we, yeah, we approve items B, 4B, 4C, and 4D.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. All those that favor say aye.
Aye.
Suppose like sign. Motion carries. Item five, public hearing and presentation regarding fiscal year 1415, consolidated annual performance and evaluation report. Tammy.
Good evening. What I've tried to do is take this document that's double-sided and put it in a PowerPoint presentation that's 20 pages or 30 pages, so that it would give you a summary of what we're, what we've accomplished this year. First and foremost, I want to recognize quite a few of my board members that did attend the meeting today. Who wanna stand up, please?
All right, let's give them a hand.
They're very, very dedicated volunteers, as you, I'm sure you know, because you appointed For your reading pleasure in the evening, here's our mission and our vision. I've tried to remind you again each year to let you know where the funding, the funding level in 2002 and before compared to what it is in 2015. Even in 2010, we've lost over half a million dollars in CUG, and home continues to fall. At the end of last year, we had an expected balance of 692,956.17. Then on October 1st, we received our allocation. We received $90,465.65 in program income. That's from the housing rehab program where we have loans out, and they come back and pay them at 0, 1, or 2% interest. When we tried to return the interest earned on our bank account, which was $14.89 to hide, they posted it incorrectly and gave it back to us. So there's an error in the reporting of 1489, which provided a subtotal of $1.5 million of funding available for us to spend. Of that, we spent $703,230.55. So as of October 1st, 2015, we have $882,136.16 for projects. A pie chart to show you the expenditures as a whole, as you can see, a great deal of park improvements. Part of that is because we had unexpendited funds from prior years. The target area neighborhood, which is Essentist Track 110, any unexpendited funds from projects are allocated to this area to do sidewalks, street lighting, whatever the needs may be at the time. So we just put it into that area, so it's a targeted approach. Also, within Essentist Track 110, this year, we spent $49,184.22 on improving the sidewalks and making them a decent client within Essentist Track 110. This project alone benefited 3,802 persons, all of which are low to moderate income. Rangeville Park, we put in the turf and replaced the bases on the bottom with a playset so that they were safe. CB Wood, we also, the Community Development Advisory Board funded this project and wanted it to be one of the first that is a covered play area for the children, and also is accessible to those with special needs, those children with special needs. So we're very happy to get this completed this year. Windsor Park, we also replaced some of the decks on the playsets. Lots Hill Pool is currently underway. It's been many, many years since that pool were renovated. We're currently removing the deck and installing the pumps in, in the pump house for the pool. Street improvements were done on Bonita and Duval and Kimball, which is by the two on Loop 499 north of that, by the two stripe stores that are there. Clearance and demolition, although we didn't use CUBG funds to demolish any structures, we did use funds to test for asbestos for those structures that are going to be demolished with the National Guard. So we tested 19 structures for asbestos, and 33 were demolished with the National Guard last year. Housing rehab and reconstruction, this year was a little bit slow. We've been able to fill the position of the housing rehab inspection, position, so I've had to assume those duties. But we were able to help five homeowners this year. We have two homes that are currently being reconstructed that I'm sure that you'll see in the weekly report. And this is a disabled gentleman. You see his driveway on the right-hand side before and then after. So five of the homes were elderly, so all of the population that we served with the housing rehab program, they're all elderly. Four were female, had a household, and three or more, three of the five had disabled members within the household. So we expended on those homes this year is $132,000. Public service activities that were funded in the Euro Boys and Girls Club, when they served 1,100 youth, and the Senior Companion Program, there were stipends provided to 12 elderly. The Sunshine Haven, where those that are terminally ill go to spend their last days, we were able to provide assistance for 25 Harlingen residents. And then we have the court-appointed special advocates, which 100 abused children were served with the funding through CUBG. Girl Scouts also provided memberships to 460 low-income youth. And the Ronald McDonald House served 128 with their services. In total, we spent $118,500 for the public services, which were six individual posted service activities. That was able to leverage over $1.6 million in the community, and services were provided. In addition to that, all of the persons, the number of persons that we served, it was approximately 29,000. So that's quite a significant number of Harlingen residents that were served with our funding. Through the new, HCDC was our designated housing and community development organization. They constructed this home, and the $93,000 is the sales price, that has to be the sales price through appraisal, and $36,320 were home funds, which are put in to make it affordable. And so we've provided you several pictures of those. We no longer have a partnership with HCDC at this time, so I'm also undertaking the construction of affordable housing, so we have four that are underway right now. Last year, we expended $117,272.17 in home funds, and that provided five eligible home buyers with a new home. Pie chart showing the available fund balances, so it'll tell you of the unexpendited funds that we have, what we're gonna be spending on the next year. This is a public hearing, so if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
I'll ask the public hearing, if anyone would like to address the cap, the caper.
She wants to ask something. First, Yolanda Shoffit, 285, I must warn. I wanted to ask her how much they give the New Haven, in Armito, for the, you say you, there's 25 residents, you gave money for 25 residents that they helped, the, what is it, New Haven, I forgot the name of it.
Sunshine Haven.
Sunshine Haven. Sunshine Haven, how much we gave them this year as opposed to last year, is it every year?
It depends, Dave.
Huh?
It depends.
Do they apply every year?
Yeah.
So how much did they give last year? I know one time they gave them $8,000, and the next time they gave them $7,000. That was, and then the Lawson Fish, oh, fish and loaves. The reason I'm asking is because one time I was here, I sit right there, and they were, they awarded the Lawson Fish, it was $27,500. They didn't give him anything because of the fact that he didn't wanna provide information to you all, and that line was over, and he didn't get anything. But yet I looked on the, on the internet, on check fine, I think it's check fine, and I found that overall they gave him $27,500. And one time they gave New Haven, the Sunshine Haven, $7,000 or $8,000, and we had a conflict of interest up there, who was related, the brother-in-law. And I was just wondering how you base this when you break the rules? See, I don't mind you giving away the money, because if it's needed, it's needed, but how you do it is wrong. When you look under your check fine, it just doesn't match. So there's something wrong.
All right, is there anyone else would like to address the consolidated annual performance and evaluation? Hearing now, I'll close with public hearing, and ask the Commission if they have any questions. What a great report. I mean, what a fantastic body of work that you all have done, and all of the work that's been done this year to improve the community. It's a real, it's something to be really proud of, not only the board and your staff, but all, all of the community can be proud of the work that's been done. So congratulations, fantastic report. Thank you all. Thank you to the board, worked so hard to make some hard decisions, but to help the community, so we appreciate here all you, all the hours you spend volunteering to make good things happen for people in the city of Harlingen. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, go on to item six, which is to consider and take action to authorize the sale of real property at fair market value to a nonprofit organization, Habitat for Humanity, to construct a single-family home for low-income families.
And provided in your brief summary, I've let you know that the city of 1970-ish foreclosed on this property for whatever reason. It fell through the cracks, and it wasn't until recently, when we were looking for lots to build upon for Habitat and myself, that we came across this one. There is an existing structure on the area that will need to be demolished. We would like to get a fair market value from a real estate agent, appraiser, once you all approve this. And then Habitat has agreed to pay fair market price for the lot, and then they'll construct a new home.
Sir, a motion to authorize the sale?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those that favor say aye.
Aye.
Suppose like sign. Wayne, thank you. We appreciate this partnership that we've got going with Habitat for Humanity, and we're really glad to be able to do these things with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item seven, consider and take action to authorize the mayor, on behalf of the city of Harlingen, execute the acceptance of a two-year general victim assistance grant for the period covering September 1st, 2015 through September 30th, 2017, as cure funding from the Criminal Justice Division, cover office to cover salaries related expenses for the least part of crime victim in a assigned position.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. This grant was originally approved a few months ago. However, since then, the Criminal Justice Division has extended the grant log to a two-year period. The initial project was $43,588.37. Now the new, the new cost, or the new total, is $90,809.11, which includes $72,647.29. That's gonna be reimbursed from the Criminal Justice Division office. The tax match required for the city is $18,161.82, and staff recommends approval of the, or adopt resolution for the grant.
Okay, is there any questions? And is there a motion to authorize?
Second.
Any, any discussion? And all those that favor say aye.
Aye.
Suppose like sign. All right, thank you. Item eight, consider and take action to approve an ordinance on first reading of amending ordinance number 02-93, establishing new rental and supplemental fees charged by the city of Harlingen public library for the use of the media and facilities, providing effective date, providing a publication and updating other matters related to the foregone.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners. At its March 2nd meeting, the library board voted to allow the public to rent library meeting rooms for occasions such as baby showers and bridal showers. Additionally, we've had requests for rental of the library's computer lab for group training. We do not currently have meeting room fees for either. This ordinance is establishing those meeting room fees. It's also slightly increasing our after-hours rates and our for-profit rates to allow us to cover our operating costs for non-operating hours, including staff time and electricity and water. The library board has recommended, recommended these increases to help, help cover our operating costs. Staff, staff recommends approval for amending the ordinance. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do you may have any questions about the, these rates? Then I'll ask your question.
I was just gonna say, like the computer labs, we're not doing it right now. You didn't have a rate. This is not gonna ensure the public to have access to those computer rates?
No, we actually have two separate labs. One is downstairs, which is more used for the public. Upstairs, we have a smaller secluded room that is rarely used, so that would be the area that we'd be renting out to the, to these organizations that would like to do group training.
And then your auditorium room after hours, we've never done that before, and now you're gonna, that's why we have a rate to have staff person available?
Right, we currently are renting it out at a lower rate, at the hourly rate plus $30 an hour. rate plus thirty dollars an hour. This is slightly increasing it to help us cover our electricity and staff time.
Well, I'm looking at two that have no rates, I'm going to take it.
Those are, those are the, the social rates. We, we previously did not allow people to rent out the room for baby showers and bridal showers and that type of thing. So we're allowing that, and this is helping us establish a rate and know what to charge those groups.
Very good. Thank you.
Would you read the caption, please?
An ordinance amending ordinance zero-two-dash-ninety-three, establishing new M O U rates and supplemental fees charged by the city of Harlingen Public Library for use of the meeting room facilities, providing effective date, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item nine, consider and take action to approve a memorandum of understanding of cross-border indications and emergency response strategies between the cities of Brownsville, Harlingen, and Matamoros, Viar de Mosso, Tamalipas, in the case of an accidental release of hazardous materials and other hazards, and authorize the mayor to sign the memorandum of understanding sheet.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. Before you, you have, as you mentioned, the draft M O U that would allow us to continue the training programs and between the city of Harlingen and Brownsville, and of course the cities of Matamoros and others crossing the border. As I mentioned to you, as was asked of me last commission meeting, they added language in there, we've already discussed that with our attorney, that we may, we're not obligated to go. This is why it's so important that we conduct the training on this side of the border, as we're going to be doing with this grant that we've, we've got awarded. A lot of what we plan to do, and I was excited to share that with you, we are, in the event, God forbid, that there's an accident across the border, our intent, as we're going to train and practice with this upcoming mock scenario in April, is to set up our E O C and command on this side, because they're, they're asking for guidance and direction. So activation of the E O C here was, would be as far as we go, and having direct communication via Skype with them, and give them direction, with our resources on this side of the border. The preparation of the training, of course, the preparation for them through the training will be done on this side of the border, with funding provided, start off in April at the, up to sixty thousand dollars that was approved by this commission last week, or two weeks ago. Staff recommends approval of this, so we can continue more training and funding, again. I want to emphasize this side of the border, on the U S side. I'll answer any questions you might have.
Should there be a real event, emergency in Matamoros? We will stay here. We will let them deal with it.
That is correct, and we've made them aware of this. If I may, Mayor, share with you, this is an ongoing memorandum that's continued, updated every couple of years. Back in two thousand ten, like I said, thirty-second version of the update, there was a meeting that was held here with all the departments in the Rio Grande Valley and Brownsville, at which time it was duly noted that language needed to be added to this, that we may, it was not obligating the cities to go. And they've done that, and we've shared that with our city attorney, and he reviewed it, and we made sure we covered that in detail. So this is what I bring to you.
I've read the agreement. It's not legally binding agreement, and it, and it's really an update of a prior agreement that started in nineteen ninety-seven, and then they updated it in two thousand two. This is, this is the most recent update. And it's really something that relates back to what we approved the grant last week, the federal money for hazmat training. The federal government started this program in eighty-eight to develop cross-border cooperation, and it's really an add-on to our existing plans, it doesn't amend our plans, and it's just an attempt for better communication and coordination across the border in case of a serious hazardous material issue, so we can communicate with both sides. This creates a framework, but it's not legally binding, doesn't require us to really do anything, and it gives us the authority to evaluate the situation as to whether we want to participate in any way in any, any cross-border issues, so. And it's, and it's in the language, as, as the chief pointed out, when they got together, they added the language, I can't hear it, read it to you, but anyway, it's, it gives us the option.
Several years ago, when they had the train hit the propane truck, or whatever it was, in Viar de Mosso or Fonton, do you remember that? Did Harlingen respond to that?
It was before.
Yeah, before your time, I'm asking Dan.
I don't believe we sent anybody over there.
Again, Commissioner, our intent is to prepare them.
Right.
On this side, and we welcome them to come by. A lot of your donations also, in-kind donations on, on other issues, as we've given them, such as equipment, helps prepare them for this type of incidents with the train and the coast hanging hand.
I think the intent here, Commissioners, is to provide guidance to them remotely, from this side of the border.
Through the E O C activation.
Through the E O C.
That will be the extent of ours.
Okay, and in effect, I think this exercise that we approved the grant for the last meeting, that, that'll sort of test, you're going to have an opportunity to test this plan and this agreement.
That's correct, Mayor, Commissioners, that's exactly what we planted.
It also provides training for our folks as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, it provides good training, because we trained them, we trained, our folks received training as well, so it prepares both sides.
As part of the original federal plan, started in eighty-eight, that they wanted to develop sister-city cross-border agreements from, from Texas to California, to begin to build frameworks of understanding and communication in the case of these events, and it relates to the EPA concerned about air quality issues, and of course, our continuing upgrade of these, of these agreements, will probably encourage them to continue to fund us to do projects related to this activity.
Okay, it's all, all part of overall emergency preparedness, things that we do to make sure that we're ready, so. Okay, anybody have any other questions about this? Is there a motion to approve the M O U?
So moved.
Or second?
Second.
And is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Thank you. Item ten, is to consider and take action to approve the renewal of a fire protection contract between the city of Harlingen and Cameron County Emergency Services District One, to provide fire protection services for fiscal year fifteen, sixteen, for one hundred and fourteen thousand eight hundred and twenty, thirty-seven cents to be paid quarterly installments.
That's correct, Mayor, before you, again, you have your, the last of the contracts that were pending, and we finally got it approved, and the legal, both sides have looked at it and agreed, and we'll bring it before you for your approval, staff recommends approval of this, one hundred and fourteen thousand eight hundred and twenty, thirty-seven, and the installments of twenty-eight, seven oh five one nine.
As we've noted before, these are, this is a maximum rate allowed by the state.
That's correct.
To be charged.
And that's what we, we've shared, shared with our legal.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the agreement?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
Thank you so much.
Motion carries. Thank you, Chief. Item eleven, consider and take action to approve final residential replant of G L A D subdivision, being a re-subdivision of Lot Two. Lot One proves the state subdivision to change the land use of the subject lot from residential, single-family to commercial. Advocate Brown, the Allen Associates.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. The proposed replant consists of a one-lot subdivision. It's located on Bricks Coleman Road, just north of Loop four nine nine. This is a subject of one-lot subdivision. This is an area of use, to give you a description of where it's located. This is the loop, this is Bricks Coleman, would be this property here on the east side of Bricks Coleman Road. It's located outside the city limits, within our E T J. The reason for the replant is the developer is, is proposing to remove a platino which restricted this subdivision to, to residential use, and he's proposing this to be a commercial use lot. Water, wastewater services will be provided, water will be provided by East River Water Services, it will be provided by Orange Water Works. Staff has recommended approval of the request.
Okay, is there a motion to approve this final replant?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item twelve, consider and take action to authorize the mayor to designate the city manager to execute final applications for the hazard mitigation grant program.
Good evening.
On behalf of the city of Harlingen, for purposes of state and federal financial assistance.
Good evening, Mayor, State Commissioners, City Manager. The hazard mitigation grant program is funded by FEMA and administered to, to the Texas Department of Emergency Management. It's a grant designed to prevent or reduce future loss identified through funding of cost-effective mitigation measures. The, the hazard mitigation fund program provides seventy-five percent of the cost, and the city will provide twenty-five percent of the cost. The matching can be provided in a variety of ways, including in-kind services such as engineering. The projects that we are doing the applications for are Thirteenth Street Drainage Stitch, Dixie Drainage Stitch, Fifth and Seventh Street Drainage System, Ninth and Thirteenth Street Drainage System, Thirteenth Street and Marshall Street System. The exhibits are in their, in your layouts. Staff recommends approval to authorize the mayor to designate the city manager to submit the applications on behalf of the city.
Okay, does anybody have any questions about this?
Have we been awarded funds under this program previously?
Yes, Jefferson Edge was the last one.
And when was that?
Jefferson Edge was in two thousand eleven, and we also leave Third Street Edge, which we did about two years ago.
And what's our expectation in terms of how much? You just never know?
We don't know, very competitive, Commissioner. Once, once these grants become available, or the funds become available, everybody submits, very competitive process, so if, if we're, if we get one, we'd be very fortunate. But we try to submit as many as we can. We will still bring it back to the commission if we are awarded a, a grant for consideration and acceptance.
It's a point system?
It is.
Okay, any other, any other, there are three different projects being submitted, and, so, I guess theoretically, you can award all of them, but, or, or just one?
Actually, it's fine.
Hmm?
But, yeah.
Okay.
But it is, it is a competitive process, and again, if, if we're fortunate, we get off the high, we can, we can always decide, we can move forward. But anytime you have an opportunity to do a drainage project at seventy-five, twenty-five percent of the cost, it's a great deal.
Right, so I think it's great that you all keep your eye out for these opportunities, and that we're at least trying to get considered for these grants. So is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Mayor. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item thirteen, consider and take action to adopt an ordinance on first reading to designate a parking zone along the west side of North B Street at Zavala Elementary School.
This request was presented to staff by the principal and the CHS personnel. Staff verified the concern with an onsite visit and determined a need to place a no-parking zone. A no-parking zone will be from times from seven-thirty to eight-thirty, and from two-thirty to three-thirty in the afternoon. Staff recommends approval of no-parking zone.
Ask the city attorney to read the order.
Ordinance to establish a no-parking zone on the west side of North B Street, beginning at its intersection with Dawson Avenue extending north, for distance approximately four hundred and five linear feet in length. To authorize the towing of vehicles parked in said no-parking zone, establish a penalty not to exceed two hundred dollars for violation of provisions of this ordinance, providing for the publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
So this will be affected with signs?
Yes. It's mainly in the drop-off and pickup in the afternoon.
We have some speed bumps in there, don't we?
We have one.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Fourteen, consider and take action to adopt an ordinance on first reading to designate a three-way stop on P Street behind the H U B store.
Staff has determined the need to place a three-way stop behind the H U B for pedestrian crossing at that location from the parking lot in the back area. The, basically, we did a little study based on the Texas M U T C D manual, and we determined the need to place the three-way stop at this location. Staff recommends approval of the three-way stop at this location.
Is there a, yeah, would you read the caption?
Ordinance authorizing the placement of three-way stop sign on P Street at its intersection with the entrance into H U B and the Central Park Shopping Center, creating a three-way stop, establishing a fine not to exceed two hundred dollars for the driver of any motor vehicle who fails to stop and yield the right of way in obedience to the stop signs herein authorized. Amending or repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Item, gonna pass on item fifteen, and I'm quite ready to Brazil now, and item sixteen, board appointments, are there any?
Mayor, I have one, a reappointment of Sarah Aguilat to the Harlingen crowd advisory board.
None. Two, reappointment of Jerry Wayne Lowery to the Harlingen crowd advisory board, and to the new appointment community development advisory board, Alvin Johnson.
None.
None.
Is there a motion to approve board appointments?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Item seventeen, citizen communication. Anybody sign up?
My name is Rosie Lizard de Cabazos. I do not come to complain today, actually, I come to compliment.
Can you just state your residence address, please?
Forty-five fifteen Grand Road, Lot one oh nine, Harlingen, Texas.
Thank you.
And I was born and raised here. But I just want to say one thing before I get started in the two minutes. I am a board member for Sunshine Haven, and I did not know that it was going to be a public hearing on it. But we do want to thank you for the funding that we did get. And what it is, it's a comfort home for people that are terminally ill, okay? And we are the only comfort home in Cameron County versus the one that they have in Inado County. And so, at any time that you would like to come and tour our facility, you're welcome to come and tour. But I just, that's item number five, and I do want to thank them for the funding that we got. Anything that we get for Sunshine Haven is appreciated. So I just want to tell, tell you thank you for that. The reason I came here today is that, I know I have two minutes, so, I care about Harlingen, I care about the health and wellness, and I care about mental health patients and homeless I know you have an initiative on wellness, but I want to compliment the, and they don't know that I was going to do this, but I would like to compliment Officer De Luna, De Luna, and the chief of police, because there was a gentleman, mental health patient, I'm very observant, and walking around town with no shoes. He flip-flop, flip-flop, and Starbucks, they have a pattern, mental health patients. And he walked with his toes coming out, okay, for months. I would say maybe I saw him for eight months. I followed Officer De Luna and told him, I want you to stop and find out what size of shoes is, because I want to buy him a pair of shoes. And then I followed two peace officers in an unmarked black truck, and I followed them to their car. They lowered the window, and I told them who I was. And I told them to tell Officer De Luna that he hadn't followed through, and that Miss Cabazos wanted some shoes for this mental health patient. wanted some shoes for this mental health patient. They knew, these officers knew who I was talking about. They knew where he lived and they said that they would find him and talk to him and help him. My concern is this, Mayor and Commissioners, it's not about the man walking around with no shoes. His toes were coming, his toes were coming out. What this means is if a nail goes down his toe, he's going to lose his toe. His leg's going to be amputated. If he puts his feet in dirty water, he's going to be infected and then he's going to wind up in the emergency room and dead. Wednesday, the day before Thanksgiving, I was at the, at Walgreen here in Harlingen by, over here by, what, the football stadium. I saw him and he had penny shoes. And I said, thank you, Jesus, somebody put some shoes on this man. And he was not flip-flopping anymore. Beautification is, we have a lot of homeless people. We have a lot of mental health patients walking around town, but they don't know where to go get help. And by all of us working together, we can save one life and we saved this gentleman's life. And I want to compliment the officers. Now I know that the chief has some mental health officers and I'm going to make sure that I'm on the mental health task force also. I'm going to make sure that they come to our meeting because there was a time that the police department and the sheriff's office didn't get along because nobody wanted to transport mental health patients. Now we got communication, they're all working together and that's what it takes, this teamwork. So I just wanted to compliment you.
All right. Well, thank, thank you for the, the compliment to the officers. We appreciate, we appreciate that very much. Thank you. All right.
Last time they had a report in the Shine, Sunshine Haven, they said we were supporting twenty percent of the people. This time, they said they had twenty-five percent. And that's how you base, I guess, how much they give them, which is okay because of course, Sunshine Haven is, is a hospice place where you go and that's it, honey, you're gone. God has given you your last breath and you're there with your family and you die with dignity. However, some people not ready to die. I encountered a veteran, a veteran who was thrown out of the fishing loaves out in the street like a dog. And he said, give me a blanket and bring me some, a, a, a can of beer. I'm a veteran. I said, no, sir, I'm not going to leave. First of all, you're too heavy for me to pick you up and take you in my car. I stood there and tell a police officer, I said, I'm going to call the police officers because they're the ones who, well, they can help you. Sure enough, they came and they did what they had to do. This was a veteran in a wheelchair, thrown out of the loaves and fish. He couldn't wait one more day. It was raining cold and he was out like a dog.
All right. Is there anyone else? All right. That concludes our meeting. Thank you all for being here tonight. Good night.